This is the time and date set for a public hearing with respect to ordinance number one of 2021, amending chapter 240 zoning article 14, open space design. Make part of the record the legal advertisements of this public hearing for tonight, as well as the Allegheny County Department of Development review letter, which is dated January 13, 2021. I would like to read to the board and members of the public that are on this Zoom conference today. The county commented that overall, we have no concerns with respect to the proposed ordinance amendment. From a planning perspective, it is ideal to permit flexibility and innovation with respect to design and development of open space within the township. It's the first time I really ever saw a comment like that in a review letter, so it's really a commendation of what we're trying to do here. Township has an open design, open space design option with respect to properties in the township that are located in the R1, R2, and R3 and PED zoning districts. This ordinance seeks to amend only provisions relative to the R2 and R3 zoning districts and provides additional flexibility within the board's discretion to grant additional waivers of conditions in the PED or in the, not the PED, in the open space design or zoning ordinance to permit development of properties under the open space design without adhering to the strict criteria. For instance, I think staff has found that there may, in order to qualify for open space design, properties in these zoning districts have to have a minimum of 25 acres. Well, if you don't meet that minimum qualification, then you can't be considered for the open space design option. What this ordinance does is only in the R2 and R3 zoning districts, to the exclusion of the R1 and PED zoning districts, it permits the board additional flexibility with respect to the open space design criteria that's in the ordinance. So for instance, somebody has a property in the R2, R3 zoning district that's 23 acres, then you can approve the property for open space design and also modification of proposed uses. So you will be able to develop that property and with the ability to have a development or a project that's beneficial to the community and something that the board and the community would want to see. So that's the purpose of the ordinance. And with that, I would ask, does the board have any specific questions?
I don't have any.
No, I don't either.
No, I don't.
So does any member of the public that's on the Zoom hearing have any questions or comments? Well, hearing none can have a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. All right, so let's pull this meeting to order. Peggy, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Denisak?
Here.
Commissioner Schreie?
Here.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Here.
Commissioner Malash?
Here.
Commissioner Horowitz?
All right, if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. At this time, do we have any public comments? Seeing no public comment, let's move to correspondence.
Just a few pieces of correspondence to draw the board's attention to. First is our regular monthly report from Oak Ridge Fire Department. I won't bother opening it. Not many calls this month, although they did have a fair amount of training activities that they spelled out for us. We also provided a copy of a letter the township issued to a property owner close to the Hickory Grade Road widening project that we need a right away from. We've started that process, at least of a discussion with the property owner. So I shared a copy of the correspondence there. I included a service order from Lennon Smith that I executed in between meetings just to demonstrate how the road program was moving forward. We plan to bring that to the board for advertisement at our March meeting. Then lastly, I briefed the board about this issue at an executive session, but we have received a claim notice from one of our carriers that will be defended. But there's just a brief description there if anyone would like to read it.
All right, thank you. Now, let's move on to consent calendar items. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in a favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bank account balances?
I provided those just for transparency sake. Unfortunately, with the meeting being February 10th, we didn't get the January month end financials to the board. We should have those either by the end of the week or early next, and we'll kick those out through the email and make them available to the public also.
Okay. All right, let's move on to department reports, building permit reports.
Yeah, I'm pulling up the monthly report. You can see, you know, pretty active month for the month of January. You know, outside of the snow in the ground, I guess there was some ability to do some work. A lot of these might have been regarding some interior work. But you'll see our traditional permit issuances. We have new homes. The Ryan ones are in the Lafayette Plan, the Charter and the Hastings Plan. And then just a smattering of some single-family accessory or alterations that are going on. But fees for the month, a little over $11,000, which is fairly healthy compared to 2020 numbers. So we continue our pace into 2021.
Okay, thank you. Communications and community development report.
Great, I'll pull this up. Andrew, and I'll take my direction from you. You can feel free to present.
Thank you. Happy February, everyone. Since the last meeting, the winter issue of the magazine came out. More than 7,800 copies were mailed. And we also have a robust digital distribution now. We create mobile-friendly articles and social media stories. And by distributing it that way, we've also had more than 1,600 digital reads of the magazine. We've had already activity and action taken on some of the programs that we advertise in the magazine. One is our mobile app. We've already had more than 500 downloads, which includes from the App Store and Google Play. The number is probably more than that, but those are the numbers we have based on who allows their data to be tracked, their anonymous data. We've also had about a half dozen businesses submit their information to add to our business directory, which shows up on the app and the website. And we've had four complete submissions for the military banner program in the first week and several more inquiries, so we expect that to continue. And we've also put the banner program hardship fund or financial assistance fund on our spring sponsorship form, and we've already had some interest from businesses. So I expect that we'll be able to cover through sponsorships any banners that people would like to have, but perhaps cannot afford. On the next page, John, the next glass recycling collection, which we're also seeking sponsorships for, is set for May 1st through May 6th in South Fayette. That will allow us to advertise that in the spring issue of the magazine. And in the meantime, residents are welcome to participate in the other regional glass recycling collections, which are coming up in South Hills Village and Moon Township. And I wanted to mention, you know, visits and use of our COVID-19 webpage are still robust. We've had about 700 visits since last month's meeting, and we have beefed up the information on vaccines so that people have the correct links to get information from the county and state and CDC on the vaccines. And finally, John, on the last page, just wanted to note, we got an acknowledgement from the Census Bureau just thanking us for being a partner for the 2020 census, which simply was a commitment to help promote our residents responding to the census.
Thank you. Any questions for Andrew from the board?
No, I just want to say, I read the Connect magazine. Fantastic job. I love this edition. I love the content, especially the section where your taxes go. So everybody clearly understands, you know, we're trying to be as transparent as possible with everything that we do. And just the breakdown of how tax dollars are spent, who collects what, where what goes, really good informational, great job. And lots and lots of compliments on the app as well. So let's keep it going. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to park and recreations report.
Paula, I'm not sure if you're out there. I have your report queued up.
Yeah, I'm here.
Great.
Yeah. If you are able to go to actually my like first sheet, is that not included?
That was the first sheet that we have. Okay.
I just want to touch on a few things. Today, we had our first drive-up bingo around the back of the building. We had 15 people in attendance. We had all ages. We had some moms and kids, grandparents and their grandkids. We even had a dog. So it was a, it was a big success, and they all said that they had a great time and really appreciate us offering that. And we have another one on St. Patrick's Day, and I think, you know, I'm going to try to continue it through our COVID season. It seemed to be a big success. We, I just submitted a CITF grant, which is through the county. You guys will see the resolution on, later on in the agenda. I applied for the splash pad just to even get additional money to offset, you know, our match that we are contributing to the DSR grant. We are going to have a bunny hop drive-through on March 31st. It is a Wednesday. The students don't have school that day, so it will be during the day from 12 to 3. We'll have the Easter Bunny, some characters like Paw Patrol, Baby Shark waving at kids in the car. And the Easter Bunny will pass out some giveaways. We'll see if some businesses want to get involved and pass out giveaways also. So it'll kind of be like the same layout as the Christmas event, just during the day. And I think that's about it, just gearing up for kind of some spring and summer programs, planning with COVID protocols in place. If things get lifted, that's great, but kind of having our backup plan if things kind of move forward in the way that they are right now. And questions?
Yeah, love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to police report.
Good evening, everybody. The Shake Hog Accident Reconstruction Team had reached out to us to see if they could do a mix-up detail where motor carrier safety program to inspect trucks. One of our officers, Officer Schultz, is on the Shake Hog Accident Restruction Team, and they did a detail on State Route 50 on January 22nd. And during that day, they stopped 25 trucks inspected, 25. 32 violations were filed on various trucks and five trucks were taken out of service, and a total of $4,026 in fines were issued. We're going to periodically do this throughout the year. All the funding and all the fines, when paid or found guilty, will go to the township. It gives our officer that's on the accident reconstruction team some experience with doing that, and it also gives the mix-up officers the hours that they need monthly to keep their certification. And there's been an increase in traffic, truck traffic through the area, so I thought would be a good time to do that. On a lighter note, Coffee with the Chief. We're going to start back up. We're going to do a virtual Coffee with the Chief this Friday, February 12th, from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. Anybody that wants to join in can log on at southfattpa.com/coffee. Still not able to do them in person yet. It's been 10 months since I did the last one, so I'm kind of looking forward to that to kind of fuel any concerns the residents would have. So anybody that wishes to join is more than welcome, the more the merrier. So that'll be this Friday, the 12th, from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for Chief Fanning?
No, sounds good. Thank you.
And Public Works report? Do you have any?
Turn now?
Yeah, Butch, I hear you.
All right. Yeah, we're in the middle of snow season, I guess. Guys are out again tonight. I want to welcome Alan Desmond. He started on Monday, and he's been well accustomed to the snow already. We got him driving trucks already. Don't know how much we're going to get done on our regular stuff with all the snow. We've been hauling snow out of several neighborhoods because there's no place to put it. We're pounding it up. And so what we're doing is we're trucking it to Boys Home right now so we can free up everybody, trying to cut down on the complaints. Way it's been snowing, we've had numerous complaints. People don't understand that when you have to plow, you have to slow down. Other than that, the guys have probably spent more time here than they have at home the last month or so, and got to give them a pat on the back. They're giving it all. That's pretty much all I got.
Absolutely, they deserve a pat on the back. They've done a fantastic job. I'm getting compliments all the time, and people don't understand the difference between township roads, county roads, and state roads because we have all of this within the municipality. And our roads are clean, and then they go out to the state road or the county road, and then they can't understand why they're not done. And so you guys have done a really great job. I really appreciate everything that everybody has done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Butch.
Butch, do you have anything to add, just in terms of, I know we've had more snow this month and this year than we did all the last. How are we doing on salt and anything?
Salt, right now, we're having trouble getting it in just because of the demand. Everybody has been burning through salt, and so it's coming in slow. We're still getting it, but it's slow. What we're doing is not conserving on salt, but being a little bit smarter how we're putting it down. Instead of trying to melt eight inches of snow, we're plowing ahead of it, even if there's only an inch on it, we're plowing ahead to try to get most effect out of the salt. And hopefully, you know, once everybody gets caught up, and we'll start to get more salt in.
Great. Hey, we appreciate it. We, you know, continue to receive a lot of compliments about the response we have to winter storms, so make sure you share that with the guys. Good job.
They take pride in it.
Can I just ask a question? This may seem a little bit silly, but what, what do, do your guys or, what are the thoughts on, you know, I really have noticed that there's a lot of people that, I guess, snow blow their driveway or shovel their driveway, but they push it all back into the road, which just seems a little bit counterintuitive to what we're trying to do. Like, what do you guys think about that? Is it a problem? Is it not even a problem?
The people that do put it out there, Commissioner, usually if our guys are going back through, they plow it back in. I mean, we don't leave it out there.
No, no, I'm not saying your guys. I just is.
No, 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 I understand that. But what I'm saying is, you're saying it is a problem when they put it out there. And what, what our guys are instructed to do, if they put it out there, you just plow it right back. However, it's not probably the person that put it out there that's going to get the snow. It's going to be the neighbors. But we can't always be around, and I'm sure the police can't be around. And that's who's going to have to patrol it, but they can't be everywhere, especially when it snows like that.
I was just thinking more from a perspective, you know, I don't know. Could we just politely suggest that people push it to the side and not in the street? I mean, there, there are situations when the streets are cleaned beautifully and you're driving, and then all of a sudden you hit this icy patch because somebody threw snow there. I don't know. I'm just, from a safety perspective, if there's an educational thought that somebody has, a community awareness, I don't know. It's just, it was just an observer, observation, so I was real curious.
Andrea put one in the most recent edition of the Connect magazine. It talks about like don't put it out in the street. And then I reached out to John, and I asked him about that same exact thing. And he was going to check to see, we may have an ordinance. John, were you able to find out if we have an ordinance or not that talks about putting snow in the street?
Yeah. I don't think we do, to be honest with you. I know that outside of that, there were just questions about, do we have ordinances requiring private residents to remove snow from sidewalks? I mean, you know, we do have the International Property Maintenance Code that we've adopted, and it does talk about giving, you know, having sidewalks, private sidewalks need to be clear of debris, including snowmelt. But it's hard to enforce that way. But I don't think we have anything related to snow blowers particularly.
So can we maybe just reach out to all the homeowners and just ask that they work with their groups, at least for those folks, to see if they have any ideas of how, how they might be able to help curtail that a little bit? Because it does pose a safety risk to people traveling the roads.
Sure. And I would say, I would see the Butch and his guys, when they, if they encounter, you know, specific streets or neighborhoods where it is problematic, then if they can report that here, then we'll work on, you know, getting a targeted message out and trying to use some education to get in front of it.
And one other thing, John. If we could try to do something with the cars that are parked on the street, what's happening is, is there's so much snow, we can't, we don't have any place to put the snow now. And if a car's out, we have to keep moving over, and that's cutting it down to one lane. And it's kind of dangerous for the guys because they're going through with those big plows.
Yeah.
Just an idea.
Yeah, no, it's a good one.
Can we maybe do some simple Facebook push? I mean, people seem to really respond to the Facebook page things.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. I think we've done versions of that in the past with the winter weather. We, you know, have, have had and that are likely to continue to have, probably makes sense for us to get something like that out.
All right. Thank you, Butch.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to request tracker report.
Yeah, here are a list of the reports that came in through Request Tracker. A good chunk of them are residents requesting another recycling bin or calling about recycling not being picked up. Other than that, you know, it's about an average month. You know, usually in the spring, when, when grass starts to grow and there's more property maintenance issues, they, they take off. We were talking internally too about trying to track how these are coming to us, whether they're through the website or a phone call or the app now, so we can start getting a sense of how effective that tool is. So there's a list of our request tracker, not much to point out to you guys, but I wanted to make sure we continue to share it with everyone.
Thank you. All right, managers report.
Yeah, I do have a report that I prepared for the board this evening. Maybe before we start though, and we don't have an item on here for our assistant manager, Pacatina, to address the board. You know, he's been working on a couple of projects that have made some progress, so let's, let's start there, and then I'll chime in on a few other things.
That sounds good.
Thank you, John. I just want to touch base on two of the projects that I've been working on. Pre-COVID last year, I believe Commissioner Malash and the Board of Commissioners were working on a finance committee or getting a finance committee up and running. Obviously, COVID hit, and that was obvious delayed a little bit. One of my tasks has been obviously to try to get that task back on track. So over the past few weeks, I've been working with John and Commissioner Malash to basically come up with the guidelines, finalize the guidelines, finalize what the committee should look like, what their background should be. And I'm going to be pushing that out over the next few days. Also, during that time, when this was all going on last year, we advertised a little bit for it, and we got a few resumes in. So I'm going to be contacting those individuals to let them know that we did receive those resumes. We're going to be looking and putting this in place over the next few weeks or over the next 30 to 60 days. And we'll take their, we'll take all of their resumes into consideration at that point in time, so they shouldn't need to resend resumes in if they see this re-advertised in the next week or so. The other project that I've been working on, I went through certification to get, to be able to submit PMA and slash FEMA loans to go through the grant port hole. And one of them I was working on was the COVID-related expenses. I was able to submit for the personal protection equipment and the sanitizer and the signs, basically all of the smaller equipment items or the smaller ticket items in one request, which totaled about $18,821. And I also submitted the virtual trainer for the chief purchase last year under the COVID supplies, obviously because of training was limited due to the social distancing and what have you. So I submitted that expense for $59,999 as well. If we get paid on both of those, PMA will pay about 75% of what we submitted, so the total would be about $78,820. And 75% of that would obviously be about $63,000 in reimbursement expense that we've been looking at to our bottom line. The good news is, it's a 10-step process, or there's a 10, there's actually 10 review levels that this has to go through. Since last week, we've been able to make it through four of those levels without an issue. So knock on wood, we'll make it through the remaining issues, the remaining levels, and hopefully get reimbursed over the next few months for all of these things. So, and if there's any questions for anyone, I'm available, so thank you.
Just wanted to point out that these are, this will be a reimbursement, not a, not a loan.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, no, great work on that. Really good to see, you know, those reimbursements roll back in. You know, we had gotten the, the CARES Act money from the county, which was, you know, really easy to, to verify through the police officers' wages. So the PMA reimbursement kind of fell off the radar a little bit, so kudos to Pat for getting that on track and turned around quickly for us.
Thanks, Pat.
Great job, Pat.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Pat, are you good there?
I'm good there, John. That was, I could go on for hours at this point, but I'll let you, since it's a little snowy night, I'll let everyone go.
Perfect.
You've been officially here for like five weeks, and you've already accomplished all of that. I'm impressed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I know we have several agenda items, so I'll just be brief and highlight a few things in my report. Later in the, in the meeting, we're going to discuss the bid results from the Phase 1 of our municipal complex, which was good, good news. We had a lot of interest, and we'll hear about how that went and hope to award that, that contract for the earthwork later tonight. Kind of puts us on a good timeline to, to move that project ahead and to potentially see some, some activity on the site, maybe as early as, as March, which is, I know will be well-received by you guys and the, and the township as whole in general. Butch shared a little bit with us. I, I know that we had spoken last week about bringing on another Public Works employee. So we did start a new employee Monday of this week. So kind of indoctrination, not by fire, but by snow, I guess you'd call it, and really putting them to work right away. So in a way, that's, that's good. We also began, you know, an operational assessment in the Public Works Department. We had some talk about that last month, and that process has started. We'll have some follow-up with a consultant that's helping us with that, maybe set up an opport, time for him to get on a call with the board or at our next public meeting, just to give us an update. And to the question of the length of time to complete it, I know that was kind of an unknown last time. So he started in Jan, in January. He thinks, you know, by mid-April, we should have what's close to a final report in everyone's hands. So we're happy that that's moving forward. Additionally, on, on our agenda, we have two issues related to responses to RFPs that we had issued. So we'll let those discussions play out in the agenda. Just wanted to mention that the progression we're taking these, these services on would call for us looking at our banking services next, kind of like that finance committee. Kind of like that finance committee that, that Pat spoke about, we had issued a banking RFP last year. COVID kind of put a, um, a halt on, on that. Um, so we're looking to, you know, get that up and running again and, and we'll invite, commissioners to be part of, of that process, uh, and look to have a recommendation in your hands, uh, potentially as early as, as March. So I wanted to make you guys aware of that. I also want to highlight, I, you know, this is, if you can see my cursor, this is a, a typo on my part that should read, um, Boyce and Washington Pike, um, intersection improvement. Uh, my apologies there. For some reason I hear Boyce and maybe you just kind of falls right in line. But we had spoken about, uh, this intersection and signalizing that this intersection, flexing a, um, a DCD grant that the township had secured last year. And going through that planning process with our traffic engineers, we learned that, um, the PennDOT, the department, um, had a plan to do just that, uh, along that roadway. So, uh, upon having a follow-up call with them, we learned that they received an SPC federal grant, CMAC money, to do some improvements to both that intersection as well as Washington Pike and Alpine. Uh, so we're in discussions with them now about how we might partner and potentially put, um, both this grants and their, um, CMAC grant, uh, together to, uh, bring a, a larger project together at a, at hopefully a, um, a prompt pace. So no, no real news to report other than at least we've uncovered that both parties have been planning this at an early stage, which is good. And hopefully, um, we can, we can bring some, some action, uh, to that intersection. Any questions on, on anything that I reported on? Think everything else will, will play out, um, in the agenda.
Thank you. That's all good stuff.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So let's move on. Um, old unfinished business we have none. So let's move to new business. Item A, discuss and consider tax refunds.
Just have a small number of tax refunds. The, the tax collector provided us with a list as well as, um, the certified change orders from the county. Uh, so just looking for a motion from, uh, from the board to approve the tax refunds enumerated in the, in the links.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the tax refunds?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item B, discuss and consider SP dash eleven dash twenty-two land development application for Mod Wash Bridgeville, thirty-one oh one Washington Pike Zone C two.
Great. Um, Don Halsey, I believe you're out there.
I am.
Uh, drive this. I can pull up any of these, uh, these files, uh, as needed. But we'll let you kick it off.
All right. And I'll start reading the planning commission's recommendation letters, John. You might want to just pull up the site plan quickly. Uh, commissioners, there's a little bit of change from the planning commission recommendation. So this might be a little bit longer than usual, but it still should still overall be short. This is, uh, Holton ST seventeen LLC, reference file SP eleven twenty, preliminary and final approval recommendation of an automatic drive-through car wash facility with associated parking and utilities. Stormwater management facilities and other related land development to be known as Mod Wash. It is located at three one oh one Washington Pike and it is on tax parcel number three two two dash K dash two. The property is zone C two highway commercial district. This use is listed as a special exception, which the South Fayette Township Zoning Hearing Board approved on November eighteenth, twenty twenty. At its January twenty-eighth meeting, the South Fayette Township Planning Commission recommended preliminary and final land development approval of the above referenced application subject to the following. Comments in the following review letters be addressed to the satisfaction of the township engineer, the Mitoll Division of KU Resources Review of January twelfth, twenty twenty. There was also presentations made at the planning commission, which include the applicant agreed to adjust site lighting post-construction as may be necessary to comply with the township's lighting standards. And the applicant agreed to address sound problems as may be necessary to comply with the township's ordinance. That's one of the changes that's taken place, uh, with the resubmission, uh, by Elizabeth Claus and PE with Morris Knowles. She provided is with a report by Louis Godfriend and associates in which they've proposing a change to the site plan. As you see there in that top photograph, the car leaving off of that left corner, there will be a sound wall constructed for approximately twenty feet or more from the corner of the building out. So that as the air blowers, uh, as they're drying those cars, if the doors happen to open, they'll be able to maintain that decibel level down to the required limits of the South Fayette Township ordinances. So I was glad to see that. The third item was the applicant agreed to provide additional screening and planting along the norly property line, should it be required under the zoning ordinance. So it turns out that is to the left of the building that you see on that site plan there. That is not required because this particular site was an add-on to the original Berska Park. Therefore, it's not part of the overall approved plan and it would not require a buffer because this property, along with all the properties surrounding it are in fact C two. So there's no reason to add that buffer. So that has been eliminated. The third item is the applicant provided agree to provide adjustments and/or additional studies or services as may be required by the township's geotechnical and traffic engineers pending review of the, of those professionals. Um, the traffic engineer had some good points, um, one of which I found interesting. As you see at the top of the site there, there's a multitude of cars waiting in line. That's where they check through. It's an automatic check-in. They go through a little kiosk there, then they enter the, the site and they go through the car wash. As they exit the car wash, you notice all the parking stalls are kind of angled towards that degree. Every one of those stalls has a vacuum. Um, and the, the township's traffic engineer was concerned the cars might want to come in and use a vacuum. Well, the vacuums are free. So those cars that proceed through the car wash would not be allowed to use those vacuums because they can't get there without paying and going through the service of the, the car wash. So that, that's the major resolution, uh, to that effect. Um, so that was good. The geotechnical report appears to be in line. I read that myself, but we'll still take time and allow the geotech engineer to have a, an eyeball on that. Um, this is a question that perhaps if the applicants, uh, on, online this evening, they might want to chime in. There was a statement at the planning commission that the hours of operation would be eight AM to eight PM. I was thinking the eight PM in the summertime might be awful short time. So, um, when I'm done here, maybe we'll see if the applicant is online and can comment if that is in fact the true hours. Uh, the next item, the applicant agreed to comply with the performance standards listed under two forty ninety-seven, items A through K. Uh, commissioners, so you're familiar with that. That's fire protection, electrical disturbance, commercial and Washington Pike overlay. Uh, sufficient property or C two. Things such as that vibrations, noise, odors and so forth. Our biggest concern again was with the noise as these cars are coming out of a car wash, which they have addressed and they did provide a full written report on that item. Especially the sound, which I found refreshing. The applicant agreed to set monumentation around the perimeter of the site as required by the Saldau under survey monuments. That has now been changed to a waiver request to allow the iron pins which were set around the property to be placed in lieu of the required monuments. And I would support that, uh, as, as a recommendation. The applicant finally agreed to provide adjustments or additional studies or services as necessary as may be required following a final review of the stormwater and the other reports that we just outlined above. So the, in conclusion of the planning commission's recommendation, they now request two, two waivers or modifications to be granted. Uh, one was the iron pins to be allowed to be set in lieu of the concrete monuments around the site. And secondly, that the planning commission recommended a waiver to Saldau's subsection two fifteen thirty-nine K sub sixteen, requiring wetlands to be identified on the submitted site plan. The reason for that being is if you're familiar with this site, as they were building the commercial site, the sheet store to the right. They brought all that soil over and put it onto this property. It has been completely disturbed from one end to the other. Basically there's no chance of wetlands being found here. So I would also support and recommend that waiver or modification be approved as a part of this recommendation. So the only question I still have is, is a concern over the, the requested hours of operation. And if someone's online, maybe they can chime in. Uh, if that's okay with the commissioners.
Absolutely.
Hi, this is Ben Carroll with Hutton. We're the applicant and the, uh, operator as well. And yes, our hours currently are eight to eight. We have several of these open different areas of the country. And that is over the hours that we're running with the chain.
Thank you. That's excellent. So that confirms it, uh, commissioners. So the planning commission recommendation, recommendation would stand as read except for those changes which I discussed this evening.
Uh, John, can you go back to page one for me, please?
This?
Yes. So where it says Mod Wash Bridgeville PA, that's just the address, correct? You're not going to be calling yourself Mod Wash Bridgeville.
Correct. This is South Fayette.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, so can we just, Bob, can we just ask for a motion to approve or is it subject to, um, the two waiver requests?
That, that's correct. Motion to approve and approve the requested waivers.
Can we do them all together or do we have to do them separately?
Um, let's do it all together and see if we have a no, and then we can ferret it out if we have to.
Okay. All right. So do we have an approach, motion to approve SP dash eleven dash twenty twenty, um, Mod Wash, three one oh one Washington Pike Zone C two, subject to the review letter and the two waiver requests.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Good luck, Mod Wash. We're excited to have you.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
South Fayette.
Yes, got it.
Sorry about that. We, we started off on the wrong foot, but we're correct to get everywhere we're from.
Uh, Mr. Barrett, one more question is the, uh, the, the module, uh, the sanitary sewer module will have to be passed through a resolution. Would you prefer that to be a separate agenda item next month? Uh, or do you want the commissioners to, to?
Do we, do we have it? I, I didn't think that we had the, um, planning module completed.
Um, I, it may be. I don't have it here. It was a recommendation by the MATSF. So I, I, we'll just let it go till next month.
Yeah, I would think whenever it comes in, you know, we'll put it in front of the board. I don't think it'll slow them down with anything. We just don't have it now. I wouldn't feel comfortable asking them for a resolution before we had it.
Okay, fine. That's all commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Welcome.
Item C, discuss and consider entering into the Fourth Amendment to the developer agreement for Newberry Market with TF South Fayette LLC successor developer to Newberry Development Associates LP.
Members of the board, this is, as the commissioner has read, uh, the Fourth Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Newberry Development, uh, project. However, this agreement now is with TF South Fayette LLC, which is the entity that acquired the properties that were formerly owned by Newberry Development Associates, uh, in Newberry. Purpose of entering this Fourth Amendment is to clarify, um, and resolve, uh, open items that were, that occurred as a result of, uh, the original developers agreement and the prior two amendments. A particular interest is that, uh, TF South Fayette LLC has agreed to provide financial security in an amount in excess of one million, uh, fifty thousand dollars to bond the three traffic signals that are still outstanding with respect to the HOP that's been issued for this project. Uh, there is, uh, requirements that any further development of property that is owned by TF South Fayette LLC will have to go through the, um, planning process differently than any other developer. They will also be required to enter into an op, an M agreement for the stormwater management system for the retention ponds that are located on the site. And also reaffirming the other commitments that were the, uh, prior development agreements uh, for the properties that were owned by Newberry Development Associates LP. I do want to thank both township staff as well as, uh, Clark Kill Bill Price and Eric Newhouse for working diligently with this agreement, as well as the, uh, BJ's Wholesale Club Agreement that, uh, was approved last, uh, last few months. Uh, we are rapidly moving forward with, uh, some development down there, which is, uh, should be a real benefit to the township. Does anybody have any specific questions with respect to this agreement?
No, just happy to do it. Happy that we have a new team in place that's going to get Newberry done for us and can't wait to see what's next. So if nobody has any questions, um, is there a motion to approve entering into agreement, uh, the Fourth Amendment to the developers agreement for Newberry Market with TF South Fayette LLC successor developer to the Newberry Development Associates LP?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Item D, discuss and consider motion to award a contract for South Fayette Municipal Complex Phase One Mass Earthwork to Alexey Paris Contracting Company Incorporated for an amount not to exceed four hundred ninety-four thousand fifteen dollars for the recommendation of the consulting engineer.
Make that recommendation.
You guys want to have a little bit of discussion? We can share with you just, uh, a little bit about the process we took it through, um, and the results that we got. I, Chris Dombrowski from CEC was the consulting engineer on the project. I believe Chris is out there. Chris, did you want to, um, offer any comments about the responses you've gotten or the process that we went through? I thought I saw his name out there. Um, if not, I'll just pull up the bid summary. We did get, uh, letters from our consulting engineer just, uh, verifying that the numbers matched. Uh, the math was good on their, their, uh, their bid. They checked references, um, and we have no reason not to award it to the low bid. Here's a list of the bidders that responded. Uh, we did get a healthy number of responses, uh, to the RFP process. You can see that their, their four hundred ninety-four thousand bid was pretty tight to the number two and then, you know, kind of a, a group of other ones, uh, slightly there above them. So, you know, all in all, I think we're pleased with those numbers. Um, prior to the project going out, um, our consulting engineers issued an opinion of probable cost. They thought, um, it would be around seven hundred thousand. Um, so I think, you know, we, we got some good work. I think there was a good market. There were some hungry contractors out there and hopefully we can capitalize on that. So, um, there's no reason that we can think of that you wouldn't award this to the, uh, to the low bid.
I'm happy with what it came out with. Um, Alex Paris, so, so let's move forward.
Great.
All right. Is there a motion to award the contract for South Fayette Municipal Complex Phase One Mass Earthwork to Alex Paris Contracting not to exceed four ninety-four fifteen?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Item E, discuss and consider ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh one, amending chapter two forty of the Township Zoning Ordinance, Article fourteen relating to open space design.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, we opened the meeting with a public hearing regarding this. Uh, so it's been, it's been advertised and gone through the proper channels. Um, it's ready for adoption. Uh, if you guys have any questions, we can certainly entertain them now. If not, um, we're ready to, uh, ready to adopt.
All right. Well, and is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh one, amending chapter two forty of the Township Zoning Ordinance, Article fourteen relating to open space design?
I'll make that motion to adopt it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item F, discuss and consider advertising ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh two, accepting the roads in Berkeley Ridge.
Bob, I know that you worked on these next three items. Do you want to give the, the board a, a quick overview and then we can just run through the motions?
Sure. I think there's actually perhaps four, uh, of these items.
Okay.
The township staff had identified, uh, roads in plans that are particularly some age to them that were never accepted by the township. And in order, in order to accept them, you have to go through the ordinance process. in order to accept them, you have to go through the ordinance process and also obtain a deed of dedication signed by the developers. The ordinance are all completed. Deeds have been sent out to the developers for execution. The the import of all this is that once you get these roads accepted, you can add them to the liquid fuels list, get some money for them, probably have been plowing them and taking care of them for years anyway, but this makes it official, and we can get some liquid fuels money by doing this as well.
Great, yeah, thanks for your work on this, Bob. You know, a lot of these were ones where we were just having a hard time getting communication with with developers, and so I think they they kind of lingered for a little while. So thanks, Bob, for getting us on a path to finally receive some liquid fuels monies for these roads.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. Alright, well then, we should go through them pretty quickly then. Is there a motion to accept the roads in Berkeley Ridge?
Make that motion.
Just just for clarification, we're advertising the ordinance, so the acceptance will be next.
Okay. Okay. Motion to advertise, accepting the roads in Berkeley Ridge.
Make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item G, is there a motion to advertise ordinance twenty twenty one oh three, accepting Twin Ponds Lane?
Make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item H, is there a motion to advertise ordinance twenty twenty one before accepting the streets in the Legends Plan?
Make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And item L, is there a motion to advertise ordinance twenty twenty one dash oh five, accepting Longview Circle?
Make that motion.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item J, discuss and consider resolution twenty twenty one dash O two, concurring grant for RAAC.
Looking forward just to a resolution from the the township board here. This is related to a grant we've submitted to the CITF Fund, the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. This would be to offset our expense on the community splash pad to be installed at Fairview Park. You recall, we got a grant from DCNR. The township's obligated to match that grant, so this would help offset the township expense.
Okay. Alright, is there a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty oh one, concurring grant for RAAC?
I'll make that motion to accept it.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item K, discuss and consider bond reduction request submitted by Old Oakdale SF Partners LP for the Pinnacle Point Plan Phases One, Two, and Three as follows. Want number one, the Phase One bond will be reduced from sixty two thousand five hundred ninety dollars to retained amount of four hundred ninety four thousand four hundred dollars. Item two, the Phase Bond, Phase Two bond will be reduced from one hundred fifty four thousand one hundred ninety dollars and thirty cents to a retained amount of twenty seven thousand three hundred sixty dollars. And number three, the Phase Three bond will be reduced from one hundred thirty nine thousand three hundred twenty five dollars and fifty cents to a retained amount of sixty two thousand five hundred sixty five dollars and fifty cents.
Just noting that these are being released for work that's been completed. There is still some work in front of them, and that's why there's amounts that'll be retained. But this would be to reduce the bond for work that's been completed and infected.
And also that this approval is contingent upon the existence of or providing financial security for all the retained amounts.
Okay.
I have a question. I noticed on the road that they didn't do a final coat on the road. Is that something that we should bring to their attention before this release?
Well, that's basically all of the retainage that that you have here would be for that.
Final wear and.
That final wear and course.
Okay.
There's very little else. There's some, I think, maybe some plantings around the the ponds and maybe a few other minor items, but almost all of the retained amount is for that that final wear and course. So I think they're gearing up for that. This is this is just maybe helping them get their their funds in order to do that.
Okay.
Lynn, is there a motion to approve the bond reduction for the Pinnacle Point Plan Phases One, Two, and Three, contingent upon the existence or of or providing financial security for all retained amounts?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Item L, discuss and consider Phase One and Phase Two, letter of credit release for Walnut Ridge.
Both of these releases resolve, take them take them down to zero. All work's been completed. We've adopted the roadways. Ponds have been dedicated to the HOA. It's complete.
Okay. Alright, well then, is there a motion to approve Phase One and Phase Two, letter of credit release for Walnut Ridge?
I'll make that. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item M, discussion of engineering services RFK.
I I can kick this off a little bit. I mean, I know we had some discussion about it. We issued a request for proposals for for professional engineering services, working with the the board. We interviewed a short list of candidates, and at this point, you know, the recommendation to the board is to award this service contract to the firm of Gibson Thomas. So I'll let you guys, you know, kind of discuss that, ask any questions that you might have, but ultimately, we'd be looking for a motion from the board to award this contract and to have Gibson Thomas be the township engineer.
Any comments from anyone? Lynn, is there a motion to appoint Gibson Thomas as the township engineer?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item N, discuss discuss of discussion of comprehensive planning services RFK.
Yeah, this RFP was issued in in simultaneous to the engineering RFP. Received a good, healthy response. After going through our selection process, we recommend awarding to the firm HRG for comprehensive planning services.
Well then, is there a motion to hire HRG for our comprehensive planning services?
I'll make that motion. We hire them.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, item eleven, public comment. Do we have any public comment at this time? Okay. Go ahead.
Commissioner Roddy, just very briefly, it's Bill Price. I appreciate the comments earlier. It's William Price on behalf of TF South Fayette that was previously approved. We put in a lot of work, and I appreciate the solicitor's comments about the joint effort. Eric Newhouse, as you know, has been on the project previously, but now works directly with TF South Fayette. And we've we really put in a lot of hours to get where we are right now, and the township's cooperation's been above and beyond, and we greatly appreciate it. I'm also pleased to report that we're tentatively scheduled to close on the BJ's Wholesale Club deal on Friday. We're guessing that it'll go into next week, but we're we're really excited, and we're gonna have another landowner in South Fayette that had that's completely committed to entering the Pittsburgh market at this point. So just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done and for your dedication and believing in this project and working so hard to help Newberry finally come to fruition and succeed. So we're really excited about BJ's Warehouse coming, and we're excited to see what you're what you're going to bring next. We know it'll be just as great, and we're here to support and work with you to help bring whatever you need to to the township. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Okay, seeing there's any pub, any additional public comment, let's move to board discussion. Any board discussion? I have a couple items. Got to watch the exciting Super Bowl on Sunday. Excited to say that one of our own, Justin Watson, participated in the winning team, and we'll be bringing home a Super Bowl win to South Fayette. So that was exciting. Also want to remind everybody that trash has been moved one day, so if you were traditionally a Thursday pickup, you move to Friday. If you're a Friday pickup, you'll be moved to Saturday this week. And the third thing is Valentine's Day is on Sunday, so for all of you gentlemen out there, please don't forget. That's all I have. Anybody else? Seeing as none, do we have a solicitor's report?
Nothing further this evening, and thank you for the reminder as well.
Don't forget that. That's so important.
I understand that.
Alright, any executive session this evening? I know we had one prior to the meeting this evening, but do we have any follow-up?
No, nothing more to discuss, just the personal item that we reviewed previously.
Okay. Alright, seeing as there's no executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, good night everyone. Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Bye.
Bye.